And this will open our council time together. I should say that this is Wednesday, May 18 at 9:26 a.m. And it seems so early to begin thinking about the next legislative session. But here we go. Good to have you with us and take it away.
Good morning and Lindsay, do you want to open us up or should we go forward?
I'm happy to start real fast, but this is of course Josh and Annika. So for Councilor Rylander, these are our lobbyists on the ground in Olympia. So they are our full-time lobbyists. Of course, our legislative session is only formally in the beginning parts of the year. It's longer than an odd year. So we're coming into a budget year. But Josh and Annika are our lobbyists year-round. So they're going to debrief the last legislative session and then begin talking about potential priorities and what they expect to see for the next session. And a discussion for the council of anything that may have come to mind for you. So that I'll turn it over to Josh and Annika.
Thanks Lindsay and nice to see you all. And Councilor Rylander, wish we could meet you in person. We were meeting with Council Weekly during legislative session and with the delegation every other week. So it feels like we had a little break here, but I'm here to give a recap. And Annika, if you want to, we have a PowerPoint.
I don't have permission to share my screen.
We should be able to get that.
Okay, sounds good and sorry for the delay.
So we're going to, I can keep talking. Those of you that know that I can keep talking for lots of time. I'll just get us going. So yeah, we are your lobbyists in Olympia with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Governmental Affairs. We're going to talk a little bit, you can go to the next slide, Annika. We're going to talk a little bit today about just generally what happened with legislative session. The priorities that we were working for on behalf of Clark County, what happened with those. There were a number of additional legislative issues that we didn't necessarily anticipate, but ended up working on and that you'll want to know about. And then next steps and as Lindsay mentioned, we do view lobbying as a year-round activity. And believe it or not, it is time to start talking about the 23 session. So we're ready to start thinking about that ourselves. I should also just say, we provided a written end of session report, which has a lot of these details and many, many more. We are more than happy to answer questions now as we're talking and feel free to interrupt. And then also, you know, later on, if you think of questions and want to email us or ask Lindsay to inquire with us, we're happy to do that as well. Where I should have mentioned, if I didn't already, that Annika and I are going to split this PowerPoint. And so I'm going to be quiet now for a little bit and we'll join you at the end and turn it over to Annika.
Thanks Josh. And as Josh said, we did meet with you every week during session. So some of this is going to be a little bit of a repeat for you, but hopefully it'll be a good reminder of all the work that we did. So it was the second year of the two-year legislative biennium. It was the short 60-day session compared to last year, which was the long 105-day session when they adopted their biennial budgets. This year, they adopted their supplemental budgets, which are usually minor adjustments to the bigger biennial budgets they adopted the year prior. They also passed a transportation revenue package, the Move Ahead Washington Package, which I'll talk about in a little bit in some more detail. They adopted redistricting maps. There are changes in Clark County legislative districts. And as you're well aware, there are also several retirements in your delegation. So we are going to have a new delegation next year. Some, some old members sticking around, but there are going to be some new faces. And Josh and I have already started meeting with some of the candidates for those seats. The Democrats continue to hold the majority in both the House and the Senate, strong majorities. And they definitely shaped the agenda for what types of bills went through. Since it was the second year of the biennium, any legislation left over from 2021 carried over in addition to any new proposals from 2022. So altogether, they considered a little over 1,000 bills and 309 of those bills passed the legislature. That's pretty typical for any year, they pass about a third of the legislation that's considered. So there's a lot of budget detail here. I'm not going to go into much depth, but if you see anything and you have any questions, just speak up. It was a very large operating budget, especially for a supplemental budget year. They spent $63 billion, which is the largest operating budget in history. Also unusual, they shifted money from the operating budget into both the transportation budget, both one-time and ongoing funding into the transportation budget for the Move Ahead Washington Package. And then they also shifted some money into the capital budget to fund some of their new spending there. There are some pretty good local investments that they funded in the operating budget. There's going to be grant funding for GMA planning and salmon recovery. There's money for grants to local governments to help transition individuals living on public right-of-ways off, off of public right-of-ways and into see for housing solutions. They're spending for landlord and eviction prevention. And then all local governments get $5 million marijuana revenue increase shared. The capital budget, it was a typical supplemental capital budget, not too much new spending there. As I said, the most unique thing about this capital budget was that they shifted some operating budget money into it to fund some of their new spending. The transportation budget was where the most action was this session. I already said they passed the Move Ahead Washington Package, which ended up being a $17 billion investment over a 16-year period. There were a variety of revenue sources that funded this package, including one-time and ongoing operating budget support. They do sweep the Public Works Assistance Account for 15 years in addition to Climate Commitment Act dollars, federal funding, and then a variety of the increases. About a third of this revenue and where most of the new spending was is from the Climate Commitment Act. And that money is dedicated to projects that are focused on decarbonizing. So that includes transit, bike and pedestrian projects, electric ferries, things like that. And the remaining two-thirds comes from the other revenue streams, which funded state maintenance and preservation, operating costs for ferries, some new highway projects, not very much spending in that category, state culverts, and then backfilling connecting Washington projects. And I believe we mentioned this in some of our weekly briefings, but they did also allocate 80 million to the crab. So I'm going to go through the county's budget requests. And then Josh is going to talk a little bit about our policy requests. And then some of the other bills that we worked on this session. For the past several, several years, we've asked the legislature to retain the funding that the county received for the 179th Street project. Clark County received 50 million in connecting Washington for this project. I believe it was originally scheduled for the 2325 biennium. But in the past few years, the transportation budget has had significant budget shortfalls and they bumped out several connecting Washington projects. In 2021, the project schedule did shift. The project is now set to be complete in 2729. A lot of this actually has to do with wash dot delays and the service that wash shot could deliver. So I'm sorry. This year, we're also anticipating potential cuts to existing projects due to possible transportation budget deficits. That didn't end up happening because of the connect or the, sorry, the Move Ahead Washington Package. And our legislators have been really good advocates for this project. Senator Cleveland and Representative Wiley have continued to really push on this project and keeping it whole. So this session, the existing funding, 50.5 million and the existing schedule is maintained. We've been monitoring state versus Blake funding. We talked a little bit about the tension between the Senate and the House perspective on Blake. The Senate has been assuming the position that the state is responsible for refunding county, county legal financial obligations. Whereas the House has kind of taken the perspective that this should be on the counties to refund these costs. The final budget kind of splits that in the middle. It's not as much as the Senate proposed, but it's also not the $0 that the House proposed. And counties will get an additional 23 million for LFO reimbursement in the operating budget this year. We also have some interest in broadband funding. Most broadband funding was provided in the biennial budgets last year, but they did bolster these existing grant programs a little bit. They provided an additional 10 million to these existing programs. So 25 million in Curb, 25 million in the Public Works Board, and then 50 million goes to the state broadband office. Sales tax leakage, this has been something that we've been putting forward for the last several sessions. Unfortunately, the legislature really didn't consider any tax proposals this year. They were flush with cash. They're not really looking to, looking at any local government revenue solutions this year. They also have been engaged in the work of the Tax Structure Work Group. Those recommendations are due to the legislature in 2023. And they are set to vote on some of those proposed tax scenarios this month and in a few weeks, actually. So not really much action on that item this year. The county received $150,000 in 2021 to develop a strategic lake management plan for Vancouver Lake. You just talked about this in your last presentation. This lake isn't really the jurisdiction of Clark County. So over the past year, you've been working with ecology and the DNR on a process to develop this plan and pass through the money to the correct recipient. This session, Senator Cleveland sponsored an operating budget proviso that would allow this funding to be spent through fiscal year 2023. And last year, in last year's budget, it was all allocated for fiscal year 2022. So we needed to bump out the remainder of the funding. So $30,000 is allocated to be spent in fiscal year 2022. And then the remainder, 120,000 is allocated for fiscal year 2023. Finally, we also supported House Bill 1845, which would have established a grant program within WASPIC for body camera, capital, and operating costs. This bill unfortunately didn't pass. We spoke to you about the time management issues that the legislature ran into in the last moments of session. But the program was established through the operating budget this year. So WASPIC will be establishing the framework for this program. And next year, they'll go back and allocate funding for grant costs. And then taking it back to Josh.
Thanks, Annika. So in terms of policy priorities, we had a pretty modest agenda this year. One of our major issues was making sure that they did not pass on additional unfunded mandates, particularly in the Growth Management Act. And I would say, for the most part, actually, they kind of went the opposite direction and passed some bills that were actually helpful to local governments in implementing the GMA. House Bill 1241 moves the update cycle from every eight years to every 10 years. Larger counties like Clark County will have to do a five-year check-in in those 10 years, but it's still widely viewed as a relief for counties. Senate Bill 5593 provided a little bit of more flexibility for jurisdictions to make changes to your urban growth area where you're doing land swaps within the UGA that have a net zero impact. So you're growing a little faster in one part of the county. You need to bump your UGA out, but not at growing as fast in another part of the county. You, you at the same time are pulling it back. Senate Bill 5042 was actually a bill that the Washington State Association of Counties opposed. But Clark County, as we looked at it with, with the Supreme Court litigation that you've had in the jurisdiction, we thought it was not much of change from current law having to do with when your actions under the Growth Management Act are considered final and jurisdiction, other jurisdictions and the individual can rely upon them. You have to wait 60 days after the final action or until your appeals have run out through the courts. If you, if you are appealed, that bill did pass, but we were neutral on it. House Bill 1717 provides a new permissive participation process in the Growth Management Act for counties to engage with tribal governments. And that was supported across the board. And I think the thinking there is just that it's nice to have a, a framework and a structure for counties to engage with tribes when there's interest on both parties. And then finally, 5275 provided a little bit of additional flexibility for counties in dealing with limited areas of more intensive rural development or lammers. And essentially just making it clear that you can redevelop or change some uses within lammers within a pretty narrow scope, but some additional flexibility there. I will say, you know, the GMA conversation, I really think will be a significant conversation in 2023 for a couple of reasons. One is that the Department of Commerce is finishing, has a work group that's been working, will be bringing back recommendations to the legislature at the end of this year. Some of those could, could result in some, some potentially significant recommendations to the legislature. In addition, there are several bills this last year, I should say this last biennium that didn't pass, that were pushed both years in the, in the, in the biennium that we talked about before. The first was the GMA climate change goal, requiring counties to integrate climate change planning into your comprehensive plans. That did not pass, but we know that issue will be coming back. Same thing with House Bill 1117, requiring you to integrate salmon recovery into the Growth Management Act. That did not pass. The failure of both of those bills created a lot of angst for the proponents at the end of session. I think there was the feeling up until the very end of session that those were likely to pass. There was also a bill out there that would have allowed your shoreline management plan update cycle to move from every eight years to every 10 years. That didn't pass. I think mostly that didn't pass because there aren't a lot of SMA plan updates going on right now. And so there, this is not really a pressing issue. I think it will also be on the table again. It was largely an agreed-upon bill. The other big, not necessarily GMA related, but planning, county planning and regulatory related was House Bill 1838. This was the governor's big riparian buffer bill that he released right before session, at the beginning of session, that virtually no one except for tribal governments had had a chance to see. Would have had given counties a lot of responsibility to regulate particularly agriculture parcels for mandatory riparian buffers. That did not pass, but there are still conversations. And there was several budget provisos related to salmon recovery that have these conversations still going on through the interim. So this issue will definitely be back next legislative session as well. We tracked very closely, did not, and reported to you weekly on the effort to clarify the police reform bills that were enacted in 2020. They did enact three bills in 2021 that did go back and I'm not going to say roll back, but, but moved, scaled back some of the policies they originally passed. The first was House Bill 2037. They did provide a clear definition for what it means to, to use force, what, what force actually is. It clarifies that law enforcement officers can't actually pat individuals down. They can handcuff them, some of those activities that were not anticipated to be included in the original legislation. House Bill 1735 clarifies that when a law enforcement officer is engaged in, involved in an involuntary treatment act, action, so taking someone into custody so that they can receive treatment, taking someone into custody that has not broken the law necessarily, but might be posing a threat to other individuals or themselves. They can do that. They can take those people into custody so that they can receive treatment. So those three passed, they were virtually unanimous and supported across the board. I know, you know, law enforcement has been supportive of these three bills. Did not feel like they went far enough, but was definitely from that perspective, a step in the right direction. The bill that did not pass was that Senate Bill 5919. And that would have given law enforcement officers additional authority back, authority that they just lost in 2020, to engage in vehicular pursuits. This was, you, you may have seen actually some legislators have called to bring the legislature back into legislative session this summer to deal with this issue specifically. The governor has not done that and is not going to do that. This bill essentially just got too controversial at the end of session and they let the clock run out on it. But I would not be surprised, especially depending on what happens in the election, to see this issue coming back this next session. Finally, totally completely different subject. They did pass legislation that allows local governments to meet in a virtual or hybrid format in times of emergency based upon your own actions. So, so up until just, actually, I'm sorry, up until June, local governments have been acting under the authority of a governor's emergency proclamation that gave, gave you the authority to meet in a virtual or hybrid fashion, given the COVID pandemic. That authority will be rolled back the beginning of June, as of beginning of June. But this bill gives you the ongoing authority to, in your own declared emergency or in a statewide declared emergency, to meet in a virtual format where you still have to provide the opportunity for public comment and public, or I shouldn't say comment, public observation and engagement. And again, this can be, you know, say there's a tornado in Clark County or a flood that only affects, you know, one part of Clark County. You can declare an emergency that you can't meet in a regular format and you can meet and go to virtual formats without a statewide emergency. So that's a good local flexibility piece of legislation for you. So shifting now from looking backward to looking forward. As, as Lindsay mentioned, we are pretty much engaged year-round with your legislative delegation and with legislative leadership. Many of these conversations are ongoing and do continue through the year. There are a number of work groups that we will want to have conversation with you about what is most important for us to be tracking and keeping engagement with, the Tax Structure Work Group. We mentioned earlier, you know, the sales tax leakage issue is not on their agenda at this point. I, I think it would be hard to get it back on their agenda, but, but there will be a large tax conversation, state tax structure conversation, I believe in 2023, when the recommendations come to the legislature and how we want to engage, how and if we want to engage on the leakage issue is something we should discuss. I mentioned earlier, the salmon recovery conversations that are going on this interim, the GMA conversations. There's also the Association of Counties and the Association of Cities have a work group with utility contractors that install broadband about, this came out of the micro trenching bill you might remember from last session, where contractors were going to be given the authority to micro trench to install broadband across county rights of way, right-of-ways. That building go forward, there is a work group on that issue. So a number of things that we'll want to write out in our work plan for you so you know what we're working on, on your behalf. We also, it's not too soon to start thinking about what we want to push forward in 2023. It will be another biennial budget year. Capital budget should be robust. There should be pretty plentiful opportunities to ask for capital budget funding for projects. We will want to get that teed up as early as possible and be talking to legislators about that. Not so much probably on transportation budget. And in the operating budget, really probably will depend on how the economy does over the next several months. And if we continue to see the red-hot state revenues coming in like we have been experiencing. My next points here, as much as we're talking about what we want to do in 23, we need to be ready to adapt, probably more than ever this interim. I think there, there are a lot of dynamics that could change things dramatically. I, I mentioned the economy. There will be three revenue forecasts that come in between now and the next session. Will be so far, state revenues are still coming in strong, but whether that continues through the fall could really, will really dictate whether or not the state has again, a lot of money that they're going to be spending in the operating budget next session, or if things will have cooled down. Inflation obviously having an impact and, and wouldn't be surprising to see it have an impact on the state economy. Right now, there, we're seeing more retirements from incumbent legislators. And you obviously are seeing this yourselves in Clark County. As good an example as anywhere in the state, legislators just deciding that they've served long enough and it's time to go on and do something else and new people stepping forward. And just that will have an impact on what is already likely to be a really interesting election season. It's always a filing week right now, you're all aware of that. We're tracking, you know, who is, is filing across the state for legislative seats. The conventional wisdom is, you know, as you've been hearing, that it's, that Republicans probably will pick up some seats and likely will not have, Democrats will likely not have the super majorities that they do right now. But that's just a guess. And as you all have seen, those guesses can really change. That's still five months away, right? A lot can change in five months. So what's going to happen with that? Our thinking, I guess my point, big point here is our thinking for 23 really needs to be ready to change depending on what that outcome is in November. The legislature will be getting together for legislative committees will be going on tours and having some meetings during the summer, but then they will get together before session, the first week of December for committee assembly days, like they used to in the good old days in person. We're hoping this is not another virtual session. And then session starts on January 9th and it'll be a long 105-day session. And like I said, hopefully it's in person and we'll be having, having you in Olympia to visit legislators again. Or at least those of you that are returning next, next year. So I'm happy to answer questions. We really do. I just want to say thanks again. It is, we enjoy working with you. It is a privilege to serve Clark County. We like doing this work and like working with you. So thank you for, for working with us. With that, happy to answer questions.
I have just a couple of questions, Josh. One is, you've probably heard from Lindsay that we are putting on the August ballot a tax, sales tax for public safety, which would fund body cams and other aspects of funding for the sheriff's office, particularly in the form of staff and, and people who are needed to run the jails that are proposed. So I'm wondering if you could expand a little bit on 1845 and that bill and what you anticipate in the future from the legislature on that?
We haven't talked to legislators specifically about this. There was a lot of support for that bill as, as Annika mentioned. But they clearly pivoted to this new direction with the grant program. My guess would be that they continue to invest in the grant program rather than pursuing a policy fix at this point. But that, but that's just a guess at this point. I would say, you know, keep in mind that that grant program was intended to also allow for operation maintenance, public records maintenance of body cam footage, not just the physical body cameras themselves. So even if your tax does pass, I think there will be an opportunity there for you to potentially get a grant and pull down some resources from that.
Well, the, the initial one-time funding for the cams themselves is not a problem at all compared to the ongoing expenses for sure. My second question deals with the third corridor. We had talked at the end of the last session on how the people really were interested in working with us to get that underway this next year properly. So I don't know when and how you envision those conversations to begin with legislators, but we sure need to be doing that.
Yeah, actually, we managed to go through, I think, our, our whole presentation without mentioning the bridge.
Yeah.
And that is something I will just say that, and I know Lindsay shares these with you, but we do have been tracking the. And that is something I will just say that, and I know Lindsay shares these with you, but we do have been tracking the committee that's working on that and providing meeting summaries for you and plan to continue doing that. I think generally additional transportation resources are going to be really, really tough to come by, at least for the short term. And, you know, a new corridor to the degree that requires resources even to study it, I think could be an uphill battle. I know that, you know, this this actually would be an issue frankly that my handicapping of how well we might do on it could really depend on what happens after the election. So I, you know, I would say let's keep watching that space and keep it in mind and be ready ready to put it on the table depending on how November fourth goes. November fourth is not, whenever the election is.
Yeah, the study of it is is key to get it getting it underway at all.
Yeah.
We don't know where it would be.
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So Josh, I just just to comment first on tax leakage and then a question, and it really goes back to Annika's slides on budget. You know, we're in on in the pandemic, there's no modeling that our re finance manager can come up with to account for all of the extra sales tax we've experienced during the pandemic. I mean, I, it's been an enormous surplus of revenue. And certainly with tax, if you include tax leakage, again, we have no modeling for it. We don't know if we would have had even more of a surplus had we not had the tax leakage. But having said all that, it's, you know, I pretty much just stopped talking about it because it's not a, you know, we're just, it's so turbulent right now, knowing how this is all going to settle down if it does regarding sales tax. So that's that's the only reason why I've really stopped pushing sales tax legislation reform because it now's a bad time to talk about it. Now, and I've lost track of time, but there was a transportation package that did not pass. And I think it was the prior legislative session that included about thirty million for our share short rail line. That didn't pass and then completely lost track of any of that. You know, our short rail line is basically only half of a short rail line because the other, the northern half isn't commercially viable. That thirty million dollars would have restored or brought up to grade nearly the entire rail line and making it much more commercially viable. I, you know, I've heard we've missed some applications for grants, which was really unfortunate for our rail line. And I understand we have about a million and a half, which is kind of an average annual maintenance grant for our railroad. So I I'm wondering where are we, what happened to that thirty million that was in the state transportation plan? You know, like eighteen months ago.
Yeah, and Annika, correct me if this is wrong, but my recollection, I'm just looking at the list here too, was that, yes, that thirty million was, no, that thirty million was not in the Forward Washington Plan. It was taken out. And there are a lot of people asking that same question about projects that were originally included in the Move Ahead Washington plan that was Senator Hobbs's plan from last session and the last biennium. This budget really, because they relied so much on carbon cap and trade dollars that have to be devoted to projects that are basically non-highway, not on a non-automobile related. A lot of local and other types of projects got removed, are not in there. So, you know, that's kind of the short story in terms of where the next steps in terms of advocating for it, that's a good question. I haven't been in conversation with the our peer that represents the railroad. I'm not sure what they're thinking. I generally, as I said before, I really feel like, given what inflation's doing, the impact on gas tax, the fact that we're going to have low carbon fuel standard come into place next year as well as cap and trade, our gas prices are likely going to increase here in the state. I think it'll be a while before the legislature considers another transportation revenue package like this. So I think it's a very big question right now about how projects like this get funded. Not the news you wanted to hear.
Well, no, but the conversation's important, so we we do think about resurrecting that package. Especially we are getting closer to moving forward with our own operator. And the what highlighted by that, the county really needs more capacity in knowing what the railroad needs and not rely completely on the operator on identifying what maintenance has already been done and what needs to be restored to get it up to grade. So, you know, we have a capacity deficit within our own county, but we, you know, if we can get it back into a capital plan somewhere along the lines, the timing couldn't be better.
I always remiss in my comments too and saying, you know, we really appreciate the the delegation that we do have. You know, they were great to show up every other week, not not every meeting that we had, but very consistent participation. And as we're talking with them this interim, you know, their their engagement has been really wonderful and helpful. So please pass on our thanks and some pretty key voices retiring from our delegation too. So some pretty dynamic changes coming for us.
I can't believe there aren't more questions.
I can't either. Well, we will be working with Lindsay primarily here in the coming weeks and and starting to work on next steps with you. And as always, if you have questions that come up later, please do let us know and we'll look forward to seeing you hopefully in person before too long in some various events.
When do we begin our regular meetings?
Typically, we have done that like the first week of session or maybe the week before session, so about the second, first or second week in January. We can certainly, you know, to the degree that we will want to talk with you again this summer, maybe fall about priorities and and do some brainstorm and talking about what those things are that are on your mind.
Great. Well, counsel, if there's nothing else, we thank you, Josh and Annika for being here, that's great.
Thank you, it's nice to see you all, have a great rest of your day.
You too, bye bye.
Take care.
We turn now to old business and beginning with the minutes for May eleven, is there a motion?
Chair Bowerman, if I can, just really quick, if you can actually restate the changes in this agenda again, this is a separate meeting, I want to make sure that those changes reflected in the the correct meeting and minutes, thank you.
That's right, and thank you because the recording was begun after we we did that, so thank you. Yes, we moved the item two executive session on potential litigation down to the end of the meeting today so that those two executive sessions are together and don't interrupt the flow of council time. And the second change was to move item three point five on vacant buildable lands model to the twenty-fifth. And that way it will come before the public hearing that is held on that subject. Okay, is there a motion for the minutes of May eleven?
Motion to approve.
Second, thank you. Any objections? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is passed. Item three point two, Lindsay, is this one yours?
Certainly open up the discussion.
Okay.
So we received a request to designate the month of June as Pride Month. This is a national effort. And so the council reviewed the requested proclamation language from the organization, I believe, a couple of weeks ago. And there was some discussion amongst the council about changing the language, so I redrafted it based upon the discussions with the council. I will note that some of these changes that I made were on the basis of council's discussion. Some of it was merely condensing the language because the requested proclamation language was longer than we can fit in our format for a one-page proclamation. So some of it was just me merely condensing the language for purposes of length. So obviously, the council can have as long of a proclamation or include anything or not that you want to. But that's the redraft that I have here for the council's discussion. So the, I'm happy to pull up the track changes if you want to see the the changes that were made. But for example, the the last whereas, including the language and adding value to the community and the different types of individuals and their roles in the community. That was just two whereas's that were condensed down into one. And same thing with the first whereas, and actively discouraging discrimination, that was pulled from another one. The last one where I condensed language, having, let me see if I can, the dignity, equity of fundamental and civil human rights. There was one whereas that talked about dignity and equity and one that talked about fundamental civil and human rights and the importance of those things for our LGBTQ members in our community. So I again just combined those two into one whereas. But happy to answer any questions about any other changes that I've made. But I think for the council, it's more, does this match what you want to move forward with? Or are there other changes? We would, I typically, if we're designating a whole month, we do it as the first proclamation of the month. So if there are other changes, I'm looking at the calendar, we could come back next week to council time on the twenty-fifth to review a final draft before the June seventh meeting, if the council would like to.
Comments from council?
Chair.
Uh, yes, Council Lenz.
Uh, yes, so thanks for keeping this on the schedule. Well, I, there are other proclamations in the past that we haven't shortened just arbitrarily, but these changes, when I saw them, they're not necessarily changes that I would have made, but it's it's a proclamation that was submitted by community group. And so I I did send the the changed version back to them to see that they were okay with the proposed changes since it did change what they had submitted to us. And we had some conversation and they support the proclamation as presented here today, so I would be okay with moving it forward as is.
Other comments? And are you okay, council? We have heard one nod for moving this forward to the first of June, first meeting of June. There's two nods, three nods, okay, very good. Thank you, Lindsay. Next is Heritage Farm, item three point three, Kathleen?
Spaff is here to have a further discussion on Heritage Farm. I did send the WAZI report to council last week on Wednesday, so part of their discussion today is to obtain feedback on that, but I will hand it over to our Public Works staff here in the room.
Thank you for the record, I'm Rocky Houston, Public Works Parks and Lands Division Manager. And with me is David Stipe, our Planning and Development Manager. He'll take the lead here once we little slideshow up and running. And with that, David.
Chair Bowerman, members of the council, my name's David Stipe, as Rocky mentioned. I'm the Planning and Development Manager for Parks and Lands at Public Works. And we are here this morning to continue our conversation from last week on a Heritage Farm. Today, we will talk a little bit about the current activity at the farm, more specifically the wetland restoration operation. We'll talk more in depth today about the sustainability development, plan development approach and review a schedule for that plan development. Rocky will take over at that point and talk a little bit about the work that we've done to date in developing that plan, review the steering committee with you all, and then we'll actually have some questions for you. And I'm assuming you'll have questions for us, next slide please. Councilor Medveji had asked in the last meeting for some information about the wetland restoration project that is ongoing at the site. So we prepared this slide for you today as a quick review. Real quick reminder, in the two thousand and twenty master plan, the proposed Cougar Creek Wetland Improvement was represented in that plan as that dark green tree area in the middle of the graphic. It basically runs from the east side of the site to the west side of the site along the sort of channelized Cougar Creek corridor. The project creates a new wetland that is a stormwater focused project with some wet cells. And the entire project will create a more natural corridor for Cougar Creek all in an effort to improve groundwater recharge. The project is moving towards seventy-five percent completion. We provided a bit of a schedule up there at the top of the graphic for you following the open house that we had in January toward those seventy-five percent drawings. So the project team in engineering and construction and the Clean Water Group, along with Parks and Lands, can submit permit drawings for the project with the culmination, obviously, of construction of the wetland in summer of two thousand and twenty-five. It's worth noting that the Clean Water Department has a five hundred thousand dollar Department of Ecology grant on the project, so we do have partners on the project. And we're part of that partnership team and and looking to ensure that the wetland project provides the benefits that were outlined previously in the master plan. Next slide please. So a little bit more detail on the deliverables and the development of the Business Sustainability Plan. As we mentioned in our last conversation, we're we're going to evaluate options, which we'll talk a little bit further about in a later part of the presentation for changes to the way the facility is operated that seeks to achieve those goals previously outlined by the council of improved sort of fiscal operation and public access. We've done a real sort of macro outline of the approach provided here in the slide, starting obviously with the review of our approach with the Parks Advisory Board earlier this year. And then obviously again with council last week and again this week. And the development of the steering committee, so we've been doing outreach. Lindsay's actually been doing the outreach work to develop the steering committee and we'll review that with you today. And then the all-important public engagement on the on the plan, which will be spearheaded by a consultant group and our communication staff internally at Public Works and the steering committee providing what's with support in that outreach. And then we'll develop those draft plans and review them at on a periodic basis with the Parks Advisory Board and as well as the council and our steering committee, our stakeholders, the public, ultimate with the ultimate goal of council adoption of the sustainability plan and putting that plan into action. Next slide please. So how do we get there from here? We will accomplish the things that we've outlined at the top of this project schedule, some of the things we're already doing in the spring and summer of this year. We have done our selection process, as we mentioned last time, of a public engagement consultant for the project to facilitate the conversation with our partners and the and the community. And then we'll start that conversation internally and And then we'll start that conversation internally and then turn to the public sometime in the fall of 2022. Once we have a draft plan developed or some options to consider, we will develop a financial sustainability analysis approach. That approach, that analysis will undoubtedly include an analysis of the public access benefits associated with the three options that we anticipate considering. And then we'll go into the process of developing the, the plan itself with the, a couple of different reviews with Public Parks Advisory Board and the council, anticipated reviews. Um, and then two additional public meetings during the course of developing and finalizing the draft plan, culminating with that council adoption, hopefully in 2023, fall of 2023. Rocky's going to take us through at this point, the work that's been done to date, along with a conversation of the WSU Metro Strategy for Operations at the Farm.
Thank you, David, uh, council. Everyone's received the Heritage Farm, Moving Heritage Farm Forward, uh, report. So we, we began working prior to me being with the county on this, this work. And just as a little background, so Washington State University Extension Services, their program is Extension Services on one half, they also have the Metro Center. So in that same department, I guess is the right term, they have sort of these two halves to kind of meet the needs of Washingtonians. Um, and so we had worked with them to utilize the metropolitan side to help us in doing this report and doing some of that research. They, they chose two key authors for this that have experience with operating farms and extension services and natural resource elements. And if I can get the names right, so Laura Reiser, which is the Director of the, and an Associate Professor for the Kitsap County Extension. She wrote the, a lot of the sort of farm options element. And then Patricia Townsend was, which is part of the Snohomish County Extension, worked on the operations plan. And so this brought forward, it started with some stakeholder interviews in May and June of 2021. They also brought down Mount Vernon. WSU has a research farm up there that they operate. And so they brought down that farm operator again to see how we're doing things and provide some guidance that informed this. The strategies that they've laid out in, in this plan are, are good and farm-focused. So they definitely hit some of the elements that we wanted to engage in to meet some of the questions that you passed us with doing forward. And some of the strategies in regards to our fee structure, cost recovery, marketing, funding options, alternative nonprofit operators to help with the farm costs were all interesting. And they, we looked at several different models within the state of Washington and all the way to New York. And what I will say is most of the models out there are heavily subsidized to meet those services, whether they're part of a city, it's like the city of Bellevue has a, a farm about 150 acres that they operate. A real interesting model up there that the city, it's part of their city parks. Actually, Lindy worked for the city of Bellevue Parks in, in her prior careers. And so we've got some of those insights to a, a farm across the river in East Multnomah County where it's more of a incubator model for farming there to a Washington, or a Michigan State model. So there was a lot of models out there. And what we're looking like, using this for as, is that what it is, is a report that helps inform our next steps as we go out and form, form some concepts and engage with the public and our other partners on what, what to move forward and to bring back as the final plan. Any questions on this before I, I move forward away from this element?
Just a general question, how feasible is it that we can actually have a sustainable model without pumping in a lot of extra money? Is that, what I, the examples you just shared, if I am interpreting correctly, indicate that they're not sustaining, they need assistance?
Yes.
Just looking for the real world.
Right, and, and you know, and I think, you know, in the report, they, they utilize a, a common tool in the recreation world, which is a cost recovery model that's based off of a pyramid. So there's no cost recover on community, broad community benefits. So the park downtown here is open to the whole community, benefits the whole community, there's no cost recovery. To yoga lessons for Rocky, now that there's going to be a much, 100% cost recovery for that because I'm the only one benefiting from it, but it's being provided by a thing. And so I think this depends on where our lens is there. So, and where community access lies. And so if we want the more access we have in there, that potentially will reduce some of those. But again, the, the report and the direction we get today in regards to where that bar is set at 100%, narrows our options definitely to, to, to less than 100. You know, and some of their ideas about engaging with food systems and some of those other things, bringing those other funding streams and partners on are, are interesting, intriguing. And again, it just depends upon what your vision of the farm is in the future.
In the last meeting, I recall, Councilor Medveji mentioned the possibility or the potential value of having this sort of a manager for the overall facility. Would doing something like that potentially help in improving the sustainability, the, the reduction of outside funds?
It, it could. And we've already implemented that where we have a program manager who has taken on the farm as part of their portfolio to oversee that broader engagement is now working on leases and working with the partners out there and kind of branching out beyond the day-to-day, sort of just that focus of the day-to-day of making sure the farm is tilled and, and those things. So we are starting to do those things that we're hoping will open up that bandwidth and an opportunity for different partners in different ways. But we've been cooling our jets on that to make sure that we're going through this process. And we're, we're, we're not just aiming and firing. We, we want to make sure that we, we're going through that process to make sure we're, we're aiming in the right direction before we start to try to open any of those doors and do a lot of that work. So we're hoping to move through this process now after the feedback we get today to.
Eva, are you trying to say something? We couldn't hear you.
I was, I realized that my microphone was actually folded up. So, yes, thank you. So if I may add to that a little bit, there is a, there's a dichotomy between the WASU Extension and, and Metro efforts and our parks activities out there on-site as well. So i- if we, if the current setup is maintained, to operate an extension, that I think requires subsidy. And I think, Rocky, that's just, I was just trying to clarify that from what you mentioned earlier. Correct me if I'm wrong, but when we're discussing the subsidization in the Moving Heritage Farm Forward Report, we're really talking about the extension-first models for Heritage Farm. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I think that is accurate.
So there is a full range of possibilities, and, and that does represent one possible option. But there are other options as well that council can consider that offer other trade-offs. And depending on the balance, because there's a hy- there's a possibility of a hybridized approach, depending on the balance, that has an impact on the dollars, right? The cost recovery aspect will depend very, very heavily on the, the programming out there at the site. And I'm, I'm kind of running ahead of what I think is going to be in our presentation today. But it's worth mentioning that because it wraps, that's the context that all of this sits within, is that balance of services will connect pretty directly to that cost recovery aspect.
Thank you. Moving forward, so we've, right now, we're at that phase to making sure that we've got the planning approach and those deliverables aligned with, with where the questions we've been asked, to make sure those are today, and we'll, we'll go forward to that and, and then start the process moving forward. Next slide. So here is our, our steering committee that we've got proposed right now. And what we tried to do was ensure that we had tenants, neighbors, the university on it, and representatives of sort of those broader current uses, as well as making sure that the neighborhood association, we have the, the neighborhoods there, the business community, the business association representatives there. The school district from that educational element, we've connected with Mark Reeth, who is the Career and Tech Education Director, again, as a potential resource for the community educational needs. And then, again, where, where the farm sits in Hazeldale has a lot of community members that are potentially underrepresented and, and have some needs. And we want to make sure that we've got a steering committee on there who's advocating for, for those community needs as well. So we get a, a nice broad breadth of, of representation to help make sure this sustainability plan is meeting the, the community's needs. Next slide. So just as a reminder, last year, last week, last year, it's been a long week. We presented this, where currently, right now, we have the, the WSU Extension Services, sort of that core tenant that's providing research and community garden educations. We have some incubator elements out there in the past and today. And we're kind of looking at this balance of these, all these uses that are up here in our, as we're moving forward and looking at the concepts and balancing that managed public use, like a park, to a controlled public access where it's a food system, it's a farm, and the access is, is much more controlled. Next slide. So now's the tough, tough part, which is the questions we have for you. The first one is, is those hybrid concepts that I just showed, are those representing the uses that you've envisioned for the site? Are we missing any?
Madam Chair, if I could just chime in. So thanks for all this. My one comment focused on this photograph and question. You know, I, I've mentioned both at parks meetings and other meetings that we've had about heritage. My absolute awe of what Columbia Springs has done because it's a model that I think we could emulate, not only opening it up to the public, but also partnering, you know, with the, with the school districts, with fish and wildlife, you know, transpose agricultural stakeholders, you know, for different funding streams. If we can do what Columbia Springs does, I think Heritage Farms, as far as agriculture, Heritage Farms would be a great way ahead. I think everything you've outlined is on track. The only question I had going back to the wetlands, I, you know, I remember that original briefing. Did we lose acreage with that new channel? And then my only other concern was, you know, we originally had some capital improvements, including a parking lot that would be possibly non-permeable right next to where you're expanding the wetland. And I'm, I'm wondering if, how that future plan for those buildings and parking lot are impacted by the new buffers that may be developed by this wetland.
Uh, thank you for the question, Councilor. So in regards to the, we'll look into the, the model, the Columbia Springs. In regards to the wetland project, the, I'm going to give you a number, and I'm probably going to be a little off, so I apologize. But I believe the expansion of the wetland area is going to be by about two, two and a half acres to create these sort of ponds and tiers. Uh, and then those buffers will be a little bit wider. Right now, they're around 45 feet roughly from that current boundary. But as that quality of that wetland improves, that potentially could make that wider. What we've done is, I, I've had David input those master plan elements of that future development into CAD, and we've tried to manage the waterway, which is not a linear line, and trying to give it a little curve to give us a little extra space and to make sure that our assets are outside of that potential boundary. We're continuing to work with the project team on those solutions. And sometimes it's very difficult to understand what the future is from a regulatory perspective. But again, trying to use our best crystal ball to identify where that line is to have the least impacts on that future development that is planned in, in the master plan.
Okay, if I might add, Councilor Medveji, with regards to farm operations on the south side of Cougar Creek, there are farm exceptions to setbacks, habitat setbacks. And even though we currently don't have any farm operations that would be in the setback as it, as it's currently designed and anticipated to be regulated south of the channel that are ag in nature, if, if the buffer were larger, it wouldn't affect any of the current operations.
And I will add those existing.
Yeah, I was just going to say, thanks for all that. As far as committee members, I'm wondering if we should have a, a chamber, you know, like the Vancouver Chamber or some other more regional or, or broader entity representing business interests, whether it's tourism or outreach. I'm just wondering if, I, I saw the one Salmon Creek Business Interest Group that you've included as a stakeholder. I'm just wondering if, if there's a broader organization that we should also add in.
We'll investigate that, sir.
I'm thinking there of like a Visit Vancouver type of organization that certainly promotes tourism.
Madam Chair.
I have a question that I think precedes the staff questions that are here. And that is that you had mentioned, Eva, that cost recovery is affected by the balance of services. And I don't have a sense for what that looks like. If there is a continuum, what that continuum might be, for example. I don't know if that would be anything that's available today, but that would be really helpful for me in terms of being able to address these questions more effectively.
I think that we can talk through it today while we don't have a formal analysis on hand right now. If we can go back to slide eight, the, that visualization of the range of possibilities. So right now, right there in the center where it says WASU Extension, and it talks about the community gardens and, and research. And my understanding is that as we expand out from there, public access increases. Now, the, there's another aspect to this visualization, which is cost recovery. And that's not the goal of this visual, but we can talk about the different, if not the specific dollars associated with each of these possibilities. We can talk about the colors of money. We can talk about what that impact on funding would be. So, and of course, I'm not, I'm not the parks expert, so team, I, I see you on the camera. So if you want to jump in at any point, please jump in. Starting from the left, if it's a park, so if we say, okay, instead of Heritage Farm, maybe it's a park with open community access and the farm building, maybe that becomes a parks administrative center. And in this case, the trade-off, implicit trade-off would be WASU would relocate, and we would lose that agricultural resource, I think, in the community. Or it could be balanced out, but I'm going to only talk about the extremes for this discussion. I'm not talking about the hybridized approach. We can mix and match, but the extremes are helpful because each one comes with it a specific color of money. If it's a park, this is actually within the MPD levy boundaries. And so the, the funding mix, the color of money would change from being general funds to MPD funds, which would be pretty interesting from a programmatic perspective. And I know the Parks District Levy was originally created to construct, you know, those key parks. But what is also allowed by the RCW that created the Park District is changing what's in that. in that boundary. It's bounded by geography. And so if it's a park, the levy would be able to fund developments, improvements, and maintenance of the facility, which would take pressure off of general fund. So it's not cost recovery, but it changes the color of money. Private-public partnership, I think as far as cost recovery goes, that's a very strong option. Now, that could look like any number of things. It could look like a restaurant. It could look like some type of tourist attraction. In that case, it would just follow other private-public partnerships. I think ports projects, those are good examples where I'm familiar with some of the work that's been done on things like marinas. We could do something like that where some portion of that revenue would go towards the maintenance of the site. However, Rocky, correct me if I'm wrong, that definitely shifts us away from public access and more towards that kind of controlled access model, depending on what the particular partner is. And I know I'm putting you on the spot, Rocky, but is that accurate?
Yeah, it depends upon the, what, what public access. So is a, a restaurant and a organic food market would be open to the public. We're not managing it. So that could be very high public use, but from a consumption perspective versus of a recreational element. So, but the flip side is it could be a bed and breakfast or, or something like that. And then it would be a fee for service, and that would have more of a controlled access. So it just depends upon what that use is that would sway it on, from blue to green on the, on the chart.
That makes sense. And community garden, I believe we currently have community gardens out there. There's a fee for, I think it's a fee for use. It's a nominal amount. I'm going to try to remember, is it $65 for a plot, Rocky? Or is it?
That sounds right.
Okay, I think that's about accurate. So that's a fairly, it's a low maintenance, I think, comparative to, depending on, compared to some of the private partnerships. But we would have to make sure that that costing model is, we'd have to have a costing model. We'd have to have some type of rate. It would be a cost accounting exercise, and we'd have to develop a business plan and build that out and project it in order to make it sustainable. Otherwise, it would still be subsidized. And it could be subsidized, I'm going to, I know I said I wasn't going to talk about hybridization, but you can have community gardens in a park. You could have community gardens in a public-private partnership. It's possible to kind of play around with what that looks like, but each component would have its own needs. So for example, for a private-public partnership, whoever we're partnering with, they do a lot of the legwork on the analysis. For a park, we would, for a community garden, we would, or we would partner with WASSU. So research, that is very much something we would have to partner with WASSU on, in which case that would be very heavily subsidized. And that's not likely to be public use because we can't have, you know, kids running around, basically, science experiments. I'm probably not saying that right, but it, it's not something that's, and you see it right now, today, right? We have those big fences up, and it's not necessarily fully open to the public. In fact, I think some of our park staff have to call over so they can get access into it. That's because they have specific research projects that they're doing. Where having that be open to the public would potentially disrupt the outcomes significantly. So that's that trade-off there. Now, is it cost recoverable? Not directly, but someone would say there's definitely a benefit to the larger agricultural community of having that body of research be performed. However, and I think this is something that we found after the fact, and I'm sorry if I'm getting too far into the weeds. I like this detailed stuff. There's actually an RCW, and Rocky, maybe you could talk about how that changes or could change what council is able to do with regards to extension services and tailoring those for the community.
Yes, so the RCW requires that a county can have an extension service if they want, and they are in charge of defining what those extension services are for that county. In addition, the RCW says if we do have an, a, an extension services that were the county, you are required to do some in-kind, like office space and other cost-saving measures. And so currently, we have a programmatic agreement. It's probably the wrong term for what we have, but we have an agreement that identifies an allocation of general funds to help offset their costs of $310,000, $325,000, I think it is, for this, this current fiscal year. In addition, we provide them space for their, for their programs and pay for their utilities, a lot of their bills, IT services, et cetera. So depending upon what those services are that the county wants dictates what that cost is. Now, Extension Services does a lot of things that are subsidized by federal dollars and other programs and grants. You know, they've got SNAP, the 4-H program, some healthy eating education. I'm going to miss a lot of them, but they have the experimental, the research force to help, you know, they've done projects on, right now, there's a fungus mushroom growing on old logs to see if they're a cash crop potentially for people. There was an, an apple maggot research study. They're looking at different crops. So they've been doing research, and that's what they did there on the site from, what, 1945 until 2008, was, it was all research. And now it's been sort of changed with the extension services being on there. So there's a whole litany of things, of programs. And of course, you would have that authority to determine where that sits in regards to this bigger community interest and impacts discussion. So in, in my mind's eye, there's the extension services costs, and then there's the farm costs of operating the farm. And we're trying to look at it from our financial analysis through that lens so that you have a clear understanding of what is those extension services costs versus just operating the property as it currently is or how it could be in the future.
Madam Chair, Eva raised a lot of issues. I mean, I, I don't want to get in too much into the weeds either, but, you know, we had at one point talked, at least one counselor had talked about, let's just sell it, and let's build there, make it commercial and residential, and let's just get a higher use or a different use of the property. So we're not talking about that. You know, we did talk about a year-round farmer's market, something for all of our local small farmers who don't have access to their own farmer's market or within reasonable distance. You know, the greater Portland-Vancouver restaurants would love to come and get wholesome produce produced in Clark County. I mean, something that makes money. You know, WSU has great programming, no question about it. And it's essentially free. And so how much subsidy do we want to do? I mean, that's the friction point. You know, we, we haven't had trails really built mainly because of WSU not wanting people walking about. We've had thefts, you know, of our own equipment out there. And part of that is because we just don't have enough people there to watch over the property, and so we've had thefts occurring. You know, there's a lot of challenges and a lot of friction points. We just need to do this better. So I think this is on track. I appreciate the slide. And I wish we do, could look into a broader base year-round activity for a farmer's market, you know, a place where all of our local farmers could come and sell their products, and all of our local restaurants from the greater area can come and, and buy stuff, including the public. That can all be self-sustaining. In any case, I think we're on track, and I just wanted to throw those additional comments in.
Thank you.
Can I, if I can, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to just kind of pivot off of that real quick because Counselor Mevji, you raise a fantastic point, which is those items on the right-hand side, we're talking about farm managed by others, incubator, food supply, this is only a sampling of the possibilities. Like, for example, we don't have a farmer's market here. So that really, and I'm, I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but really, the idea of, of a business plan for Heritage Farm, because there is a range of possibilities, it would have to include a variety of different economic analysis. And then you'd have to almost look at a visualization of the farm and say, well, what if we use this part for that, that part for that, that part for that? And then depending on those spaces or how the hybridization works, we would have formulas and data that then drives a cost accounting analysis that gives us fees and estimates on the sustainability. And that's actually something we could do. So we don't have to, I, I think today, really, what Rocky and his team are hoping to get is, is maybe a narrowed-down idea of what councils, like what specific areas are most enticing, so that when we go to create the business plan, we can analyze a range of possibilities and then kind of come back with data. It's just right now, the range of possibilities is so large, it could be almost anything. And it's a tremendous opportunity. However, in order to analyze it effectively, we have to zoom in a little bit.
Well, just a comment. As you know, I am a big fan of commercialization, but not in this case. It's very interesting. I think that the shining star that Heritage Farms presents emanates from the research that is done here, an incubator, food supply, maybe, maybe a farmer's market, I don't know because we know that there's going to be something interesting with public market out at the, out at the port. But whatever, it is a marvelous opportunity to show off the agriculture of this region. And that is a tourist point for Vancouver that some people aren't going to realize unless Heritage Farms is developed, and, and developed in its potential for what we can do in this part of the, the country agricultural-wise. And not just with tree fruits. It goes far beyond that.
Chair?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor Lenz?
Thank, thank you. I, I agree with what, what the, the chair just said as far as identifying and really holding up the great benefit of this, this piece of property and all the projects that are going on to it and its long history in the community. I actually, I've been struggling a bit with some of the frame of this question of what we as individual counselors want to see happen on the farm, because I don't know that that's the right question to be asking. I, I would say that my interest is not what I think would be best there, but wanting to know what a strong process with engaged stakeholders has elevated as the best approach or approaches for this property. I think that one of the problems with this process over the last few years has been that we have focused a bit too much on individual counselor direction as opposed to seeking the wisdom of those who are more closely involved and who have more of the expertise that we will need to make the best decisions for the future of this property. So I can say that looking at the, the graphic in front of us, the pieces that I see on it are pieces that I have heard reflected in conversations. And so I am comfortable with what I see in front of us as a starting point and a basis for discussion. I don't see on here, sell it and develop it, which I think would be a problem because not only do individual counselors not necessarily support that, but we have heard loudly that community members and users and supporters of the farm don't support that either. So I would be hesitant. I understand the need for narrowing things down, I really do, but I would be hesitant to say, can we pick our top three or four from this, from this picture and tell you where to focus? Because I don't know that that's the right process. I appreciate the community stakeholder group and the steering committee, and I would like to see work being done with these stakeholders to navigate this difficult conversation about how much public, how much private, how, how, how much the access is managed and how we can use this land for the agricultural purposes that it's intended as effectively as possible and meet as many of these needs as possible. I don't think it needs to be all or, all or none. And so finding that middle zone, finding the, the light blue and the light green in that graphic, I think would, I'd like to hear from the community about that. I'm also glad that Eva and Rocky, you talked a bit about the difference in financial structures. For most of these conversations over the last few years, we've often conflated the full cost of everything that goes on at Heritage Farm with the separate factors. So there is what we pay for related to extension services, and there is what we pay for related to the farm and the operations there. When we talk about cost recovery, I'm of the feeling myself that what we pay for, for extension services brings so much more value to this community than the dollars that are paid for it, that it well pays for itself. In addition to the incredible amounts of research that benefit not just Clark County, but the entire state, but also the services that they provide like SNAP Ed, et cetera, I think the, the benefit to Clark County is huge. As far as whether we need the other operations of the farm to be sustainable, that's also an important conversation. I can see that we do want to be sure that we're recovering as much cost as possible. But when we talk about it, I think it's helpful to be sure that we do identify those differences. Because if this county were to talk about eliminating extension services or reducing or dramatically changing, I feel like that's yet another large community conversation we should have so that all of us fully understand the impacts of a potential decision like that. So this does get very tricky very quickly, which is why I think that having a steering committee with representatives from appropriate organizations can help navigate some of those intersections so that we fully understand what we're getting into when we talk about this. One more thing, as far as additional groups to consider for the steering committee, I would like to see someone from the Clark Conservation District represented because they are also integral to agricultural work in this county and can help reflect the needs throughout the county. That was a lot, I'll stop there.
Counselor Rylander, I believe I heard your voice a moment ago.
That's right. I was taking my time. I was sitting quietly in the background. Excuse me. Just a couple of thoughts. So I guess the question is, over the next, say, 20 to 30 years, will the extension program still have the significance and value that we see in the relatively near term? Just a broad question, I'll look for an answer at the moment. As the area surrounding the farm urbanizes more and we get more housing construction, more business development, it sort of becomes an island in the mix. And is that a good thing or, or not? My, my gut says to me that in the long run, as we build out and develop more in surrounding it, actually, the importance increases if we want to stay in touch with our environment, if we want to take kids who live in large cities who, who wonder what a, really what a cow and a pig are like and what, what it's like to grow something in the soil. So the values can extend beyond just sort of the dollars and cents. It seems to me that, that if we, if you guys identify the, the pockets, like you're trying to do here, the community gardens, other uses for the land facilities, and you then assigned perhaps a, a target percentage of your use in these areas, especially going down the line 20 or 30 years, you could still apply your mathematical model, build an algorithm to say, we see these shifts occurring over time, this brings revenue, this is being done as a public service. I'm not answering your question, but I'm trying to look down the road and say, do we want this to stay long-term? My gut says yes, it will have other intrinsic values that we're just not seeing today. But how But how do we maximize the ability for sustainability revenue wise? I don't know if that really helps.
Counselor Rylander and Counselor Lenz, I would actually argue that you're answering our questions by expressing your, your vision for the community and your thoughts on the project moving forward. We, we tried to distill down, you know, sort of four distinct questions and we tried to provide you with the opportunity to say yes or no, because we want you to be able to move along your agenda if you so choose. But we would much rather have an extended conversation about this topic. I, I've been doing park and recreation planning and design for my entire career. And I can guarantee that when we get to the end of this business plan, this business sustainability plan, we won't land on any one of those bubbles specifically. It'll be some variation of this, that or the other, or some combination of this, that or the other. We have a really great piece of property. It's divided sort of naturally by topography and Cougar Creek. So the opportunity to provide park in one location and a public-private partnership in one location, those, all those opportunities to sort of blend things together exist. And I, I guess to go back to Counselor Lenz's comments about question number one, really the gist of that question is, did we miss anything in our little, in our little fancy picture diagram, first of all? Because we don't want to go too far down the road and evaluating, evaluating options if we don't have all the options that, that meet the vision of the council and the community. We think we captured that, we just want to make sure we, we, we didn't miss something, so.
Would your working group potentially come up with any other buckets?
Yeah, I, we would definitely be engaged in coming in there, every process I've ever been in. We don't think of everything, you know, it's like having an elephant in front of us. We all see that, at that side of, of the, of the issue and there's always these aha moments, things come in. But again, at the same time, is we all live in a sandbox of some sort. And so there are parameters that we have to make sure we're making. And that's, I think what we're trying to do here is making sure that the questions that were asked two years ago for us to do with sustainability, are we still, are those the right questions that we, we're trying to answer today? Are there additional questions, different criterion we need to work on? And to where this is, anything? And I think in, you know, in, in the work that the Metro Center did, they, they identified a couple of those sites in the Detroit area, in Brooklyn, where you have an island of green, this farming element. And, and it is, has a different value than it did when they started it. And so I think definitely that those things are there to continue to educate and things. But is it all or none, all these other questions that we're trying to just tee in? So that when we come back, our, our goal is, is that we've answered the right questions, we've used the right criterion to answer those initial questions you had. And we had a process that brings in all those other thoughts and ideas. So we get that full spectrum of, yes, this is what the community wants. So hopefully that makes your guys' job a lot easier and we don't have as many people in the audience like we do today when we get to that point.
Our goal, to sort of reiterate, and my point earlier is that we get the information we need from you. So when we come back in the fall of 2023, you are saying, ooh, yeah, this is great. And we don't get a lot of, hmm, what about this? When we have a plan that we're, we're trying to move forward. So I think we're getting great information today and I really appreciate your time. We can't reiterate enough that, that your interest in the subject is highly beneficial to us moving forward and appreciate it.
Well, thank you, and I'll just ask Eva, Rocky, David, are there any final words? Or have we really covered the dialogue that you were hoping for?
Yes, Madam Chair, you've, you've answered all the questions we had up there and provide us good guidance to, to move forward on this.
I can actually add just one more thing. You know, we do have a really strong community engagement effort around parks and lands. And we see that with our interests in Park Hosts, for example, where we put out an application into the community and received 400 interested applicants. And many of them were incredible. But of that number, we could only select a very, you know, limited number of individuals. The, there is an excitement and a very strong interest in, in Parks and Land Services in the, the Clark County region. I think that in the long run, regardless of where specifically Heritage Farm is taken, we do have a pretty good engine to, to not just get community engagement upfront, but to maintain that community engagement going forward. So I guess I, I just wanted to add to all of this by saying, it really is an ongoing conversation. It's possible for us to commit to a direction, to create our business plan and then change in the future as the needs of the community change. So it's not, it doesn't have to be set in stone like the farm itself. Over time, it will grow. And that's all I wanted to add to. And thank you, Council, we definitely appreciate your guidance and the conversation today.
Thank you very much.
Madam, Madam Chair, I, I just want to point out one thing. And I think Julie Olsen's the only one that was on the council during 2018, when an enormous amount of work was done. Just look at past newspaper articles of all the coverage of Heritage Farm. Temple Lenz and I joined the council early January in 2019, when we, all that public engagement was still ongoing. There's, so Ava is on target with her business analysis, management and business plan. That's where we need to move forward. And so we're on the right track, we just need to take those next steps to move forward. You know, this has never been about an individual counselor's predilection towards one use or another. This is about a business plan and a manager taking over Heritage Farm. So I think everything we've heard today is, we're all on the same page, let's move forward.
Okay, thank you, that's a good conclusion. We will now move on to the next agenda item. Thanks so much for the, the three of you. And that 3.4 is space needs and jail update. Kathleen.
Yes, so thank you, Chair. I do have members of our finance team, Mark Gasway, our finance director, Emily Betzig, our budget director, as well as Michelle Schuster, who's our facilities manager. And we've been working and they've been working very hard looking at some options for phasing, our potential phases for remodeling the jail and also our space planning. It kind of goes hand in hand. So I've asked Michelle if she can share some of that information with you to get feedback and just the, the check in also for the public's ability to also watch this and, and learn where we're at and where we're going. So if I can hand it over to Michelle, that would be great.
Can we pull up the Excel spreadsheet? So there's four parts on this document. The first one we'll look at is the space planning effort that's currently going on and sort of the timeline we've developed to get the different components of that done. You'll notice the first three lines are the, the research that Meng has been doing with us that began back in August of 2021 and is currently ongoing. We hope to have that wrapped up. And if you can move the screen along, it should lock column B. So we'll wrap that up in the next couple of months. And then we'll start working with our tenants and some of the buildings that we will have to relocate or, or discontinue leases that are expiring this year. And that'll happen this summer. And then we'll begin doing engineering architectural bids and permitting. We're looking at putting most likely the Family Lawnicks into the PSC building. We're still working with CJC. Quite a few of our choices that we had have fallen through. And so we're still trying to find them the proper location. That has been delaying a lot of the reporting on this project. And then also some renovations to Dolly. We're looking at moving a lot of the sheriff operations, the administration type stuff, of the basement of the law enforcement building over to Dolly to make space for additional courts in the basement of that and also expanding parole probation. And so number five, the engineering architectural will take place pretty much major this year into early next year. We are also working on getting an ARPA staff report together to present to the council, which will secure more of the ARPA funding. This was talked about in the original staff report, where we've got some of the original money to do the space planning as a project with Meng. We were awarded a couple of million, but we'll need the rest to begin the construction and the engineering architecture. So we are working on that now. We'll be saying that and then once that's approved, then we'll submit the actual budget packages to secure the funding and the fund to pay for everything in the fall and the baseline budgets. We're also looking at some furniture installing for some of the ones that are consolidating, that they'll be able to keep people working remotely. So we need to consolidate their spaces or change their configurations. So that's number seven is different furniture installation. And then eight is moving departments around that are doing consolidations. Those would be like IT, human resources, Otter's Office, Communications Department, the permits center with ComDev. Those can all consolidate to allow more space for us to do some of the other space planning for departments that need to move. And then in 2023, after a lot of this, we then will hope to begin the construction of the spaces so that we can get people moved in and secure those spaces and have people relocated, because we do have deadlines for the Family Lawnicks and CJC. They have to be out, their current leases expire. We've talked many times with capital development and they are not going to extend our leases. We've been in those leases for about 17 years now and they will not extend them. And so we have to have their homes secured for them so that they're fully moved over by the end of the lease, which is May of 2024. So you'll see the construction period goes through the 2023, which gives us then some time period after that to get furniture installed, computers moved and get the people into their new locations and working out of those by those lease deadlines. And then after that, once we have those moved around, we'll be able to start doing some space plant. We're already working on the space plant project for these locations, but we'll be able to start doing the engineering architectural bids to do the construction for the jail basement, for those arraignment courts, parole probation, expansion, some stuff in the courthouse to make it more usable for the district courts, Superior Court and the other users of the courthouse. And so we hope to sort of do all that stuff late 2023, early 2024 and then begin the construction. We have a year on here for construction, but after talking to some people in the profession, because the amount of work that does have to be done in that basement area, we're thinking it could be anywhere between 12 months and 24 months. So we put a 12 month on here. Luckily, none of those areas have a deadline where they have to relocate, but we want to make sure we're doing it correctly for them, getting them what they need for their current operations to work properly. Pro and probation would like to move some people who are currently out at Mayberry, who have to work down here a lot down into this area. So it really makes their flow better for their program. And so we've got that going out through 2025. And then again, furniture installations, moves, equipment, all that. So that's for our space plan efforts and Meng will do a presentation once they're fully done with the, the background, the deliverables. And so we're hoping to have that presentation probably early mid next month that we will be presenting on exactly where everyone will be going to and what makes the most sense for you to review. And if we can go back to column A and go down to the next few lines. This next one is our law and justice jail bed expansion that we've been talking about. And if you move forward just a little bit till you get to the colored sections on those lines. So again, we will need to secure funding to move this forward. So we'll be putting in some fall supplemental packages and the 2023 baseline packages. Those will be submitted in August and then approved in the October through December timeframe. And then once we have that funding secured, we'll be starting to do engineering architectural contracts for the jail and the juvenile buildings. So we can begin that work to determine what are the best things to, to, to basically move those along to increase the bed space in those two buildings. And then once we move through that and have all that scope of work outlined, we will go out to bid for juvenile and the H pod. Those are the two we need to do first so that we can have spaces to move people to, to do the construction on the rest of the jail. So one possibility is for renovating the 1978 portion of the juvenile building, which was decommissioned a number of years ago and has been sitting vacant. The other one would be looking at maybe doing reconstruction of the smart footprint, because they don't really need that much of the space to see which of those two options may be cheaper. And then once, go ahead and move forward. Once we have the H pod and the juvenile renovation done, then we will be relocating the current juvenile detention over to that 1978 portion of the building. We will also be relocating some inmates to juvenile, the part that the juvenile detention will be leaving and into the H pod. That will allow us then to go out to bid for the additional pods here in the jail. And there's quite a few of those, there's the CD pod, the E pod, G pod, F pod. And then there's sort of the A pod, which is also has booking administration Sallyport. And that part has been discussed of where we want that to sort of fall into the whole construction period. That could be moved up to the beginning for that A pod booking admin. It could maybe overlap with some of the construction on the other pods. So, so these areas can change based on which needs we feel is most significant to upgrade at that time. But basically, we've given each of those a year construction period in here. And so that pushes this out to 2031, by the time everything's renovated over in the law enforcement building. And then at that point, we can move to the engineering architectural contracts for the jail work center, going out to bid for that and then the jail works or construction. We put that in 2032 at this point, but because we don't really need all of those beds based on the projections until quite a number of years, that can be moved out to a different time period. But at this point, we've just done it as a rolling continuous project and put it in 2032. Most likely that could be pushed out a number of years if we need to, just because the beds won't quite be needed at that point. Any questions about that section before I move on?
Yeah, Michelle, I just wondered, this would be easy for you and, and difficult for some of us observing. Could you put in the yellow blocks, how many beds are provided by that step being taken? Does that make sense? So that if we get in the end to say 850 beds, we'll see how that is evolving over time?
Yeah, I'll have to do a little research of how many are in those pods now to see. And then we're also, I know Kathleen has talked to the sheriff's department. We're hoping to get someone from theirs to give us some input also on these steps of what construction makes sense for the pods and where they see things. Because the H pod right now is more sort of an open area and do we want to keep that more open? Do we want to make it individual cells? Because that could change the number of beds. So we are hoping to bring in some, some of the, someone from the sheriff's department to give a little more feedback on this. So I think once we do that, we would have a better idea of the beds in there. But we do know for the juvenile building, I believe Kathleen, it's, we could gain 83 beds, is that correct?
Yes, but, yeah, the current facility that the juveniles are in is 83 beds. The closed facility is 43. And I, I do have the number as well for the H pod. And Michelle is correct, there's a couple of different areas in there. I did talk to the chief over there. So it's not one big area, I think it's a couple of areas with like bunks, like a dormitory style. But, and Michelle is correct, the sheriff did Uh, like a dormitory style, but um and Michelle is correct, the sheriff did commit at least one or two plus backups to be um included in this conversation, members of either uh ju- or a detention officer. Um, the corrections detention officer and possibly a sergeant or commander um to provide any operational insight that they have as they are the ones working in the jail. So Michelle, I can send you those numbers after this meeting.
Thank you. Any other questions about the law and justice area? Okay, um, if you could move it down to the major maintenance capital project area. So with the major maintenance area, this is still a work in progress. We do have a capital project meeting set up for next Wednesday, so we'll have some more information after that. Back in two thousand nine, uh, Ming did a facilities condition assessment for us on a number of our buildings. Not all of them, we could not afford to do a condition, but we did do it on the majority of our larger properties. Um, to really get a feel for um outstanding maintenance. You know deficiencies in the building, such as ones that don't have sprinkler systems. And then a projection of when we may have to do some large scale projects and all of these. And so uh we are still in the process of getting that loaded, we're working with our uh TMA, which is our work order capital module system that we have here at facilities to get that data loaded in there. And once that's loaded and then uh Ming is done, we do plan on coming back with a presentation about the facilities condition assessment also to the council. So if we can move that forward a little bit, this shows a high level um by year of how much they have projected out. Um, and we begin this in twenty twenty-three is when we sort of called our year one of how much is expected of basically facilities condition assessments that we would have to have the money to do. The rates they use were based off sort of two thousand eighteen nineteen rates, things have drastically increased then. So we did populate a thirty percent increase on these, um, just because that appears to be where the market is. And so that could fluctuate a little bit. Um, but we want to make sure to give you guys more accurate numbers on what were in the original reports due to market conditions now. So you'll see starting twenty twenty-three, we're looking at just under seven million dollars of major maintenance that needs to be done on our facilities. And then keep on going and we'll get to the next set of years. And so then twenty twenty-four, a little over ten million and then keep on going. And then beginning twenty twenty-five, there's about twenty-seven million of outstanding twenty twenty-six, twenty-eight million, and it goes on from there. So there's some significant um things coming up um of projects that we're going to have to do on all of our county buildings. And so over the period of about twenty years, we are looking at a total of about three hundred and six million dollars worth of cap- major and capital maintenance that needs to be done on our existing facilities. And as I said, that is not all of our buildings, that is just the majority of our larger buildings and larger properties like Seventy-Eighth Street. Um, one hundred and forty-ninth facility, um, and then the downtown campus areas. And so, oops, I copied wrong. So please ignore online to there should not be any figures in those lines, please ignore those figures. So like I said, we've got another meeting planned for next week to go over other capital projects, such as things that the IT department will need. Because these are just facility projects that are in here. Um, and then we'll have some numbers of other projects to come to put in that second column.
If I can just add really quick, I mean, I, um, this can be overwhelming um to see this in the dollar amount and all the work that needs to be done moving forward. Um, and I can say, I think historically, uh, we've deferred a lot of maintenance, unfortunately, um, due to funding and priorities. And you know, this is a first step to actually coming up with a solid plan moving forward. And part of that conversation next week is to identify potential revenue sources to pay for this as well. Um, and it's also, and this year is the first year or for the twenty twenty-three budget, we'll have a capital budget for the first time here at Clark County. Which will also pull that out and be able to help strategize and put that strategic vision and put everything into action moving forward. So it it is a lot of money, it's a lot of work. Um, and personally, I'm grateful that Michelle and the finance team and others are, we're starting to dig into it and actually come up with a plan. Because the longer we put it off, the more liability and risk and money it's going to cost um in the long run. So um I look forward to having further conversations with the council in the near future about the other capital projects and potential uh revenue sources to help pay for that.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilor Rylander.
So I have a question for the amount of money. Is it projected out with some sort of inflation rate associated going forward? Or is it in today's dollars projected into the future?
It is in today's dollars project, projected into the future. It 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 was based off of originally, it was based off figures from two thousand eighteen nineteen, when when they started the physical condition assessment with the main. And then we did a thirty percent inflation factor on those figures, but but it is very likely these will increase over the years.
Three percent?
Yeah, and Michelle, just to clarify, for the the numbers for this year, it was a thirty percent increase, three zero?
Yes, yes, because that's
Because the cost of goods and services have significantly increased in the last two years.
But going forward, after that, then you're projecting a three percent target?
Uh, I think what I heard Michelle say that there's no in, there's no projection for increase, but that's something that we can discuss amongst the finance team and that.
Because over a period of twenty years, even at a three percent, we're talking heck of a lot more dollars.
Yes.
So would this actually uh prevent the need for replacing the jail? Do are you saying this would actually take care of the needs projected forward, use the facility and update it?
Yes, so um that and I'll, I can provide you some additional information. We had conversations, I think, the week before you started um and talking to the uh law and justice council the last couple of meetings as well. But yes, we were able to find, you know, and by twenty fifty, they needed eight hundred and fifty beds. And we can get over seven hundred now with our current space. There's a pod that's closed in the jail, the reason why it's closed is because they don't have enough staffing. Um, and then there's the forty-three beds and the juvenile detention facility that's been closed. And so it's recommissioning that and moving the juveniles over there, that frees up eighty-three beds. We have a hundred beds at the jail work center, which is down by the port of Vancouver. Um, that's not being utilized now, it was for lower level offenders. Um, it's been closed since COVID, that's a hundred beds there. It is more of a dormitory style, we would have to harden the facility. Um, and there's room out there also to expand long term. But with all of our current, yeah, and we have to remodel as we're, and Michelle touched on this, as the H pod and juvenile open up. We can use that space to move current pods one by one while they remodel those pods in the jail. So we'll be able to do that over years. Yeah, there's a, there's a lot, there's a lot of, a lot of information and um and I know when we get um into more the details of the capital. We will be inviting um key stakeholders in the community as well, because we need to talk about services, what services should be provided, where should they be provided? In the jail or making sure that they're connected before they leave and stuff. So there, there's a lot more work to do, but this is just about beds right now. And our biggest hurdle honestly is staffing. I mean, we, this is going to be a hurdle because we need to remodel, it has not been remodeled. And I know you'll have a tour, um, but hiring corrections deputies, um, just to their budgeted level right now, they've been struggling for years. Michelle, I think that's, does that conclude your overview?
Yeah, the last part is just the clean billing initiative, but we've talked about that quite a bit this week. I just put it out into a timeline for the last one, so people can see when we'd have to be doing the assessment on the buildings versus any uh renovations needed to bring that up to the clean building. Um, condition standards, and then when the reporting would need to be done to the state. So, so those have been talked about earlier this week. And that's it.
And if I could just um mention on that one, it's all the clean building initiative, and I know the chair um had mentioned it in our check-in. Um, Lindsay, I know you're listening, if you could add that to the list for the delegation and the legislative conversations to see if it, this is a an unfunded mandate from the state. So if there's something that we can do during the legislative session to provide additional funding to come in compliance um with the state mandate, that would be helpful.
Sure, I'm happy to add that to the list.
Thank you. Any other questions on these sections? And then just so to note, the second tab does go more in depth of the um, the major maintenance facility condition projects. Um, as far as what type of stuff it is, fire, lighting, HVAC, low voltage. And so this gives you which buildings, which properties, and the estimated cost and with a markup factor on it. And then the third tab is the one we will develop next week as we start talking about capital projects. Any questions?
Just a comment from me, uh, Michelle Kathleen, great work. I mean, putting together a capital plan finally is a great thing, and this is a pragmatic way forward uh to address the jail situation. So great work.
Thank you.
Given the magnitude of this, it's hard to imagine that this type of work has gone on without this effort in the past. So it's pretty amazing, but thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else that um the finance people or your focus on the jail Kathleen that you wish to discuss?
I don't have anything to add, again, I'm just appreciative of the work that the staff is doing to get this up. And you know, this is not easy task and um, but I think the phased approach is going to help both with the financial, but just for planning purposes as well. Um, I don't know if Mark or Emily have anything to add.
Chair Barman, I just want to add that, you know, we've been wrestling with the, these issues for a long time. And I also want to um extend my appreciation for the work that's being done on the capital side. It it's been a ten-year, you know, request of mine to to be working on these things. And I also want to appreciate the approach that's being taken with the county manager, with Michelle, with the finance team of trying to do this in bite-sized sections. We all understand the limitations that the county has on on revenue. And we're trying to figure out how we can do this. You can see that it extends out over time and and some of us aren't going to be here when these projects are completed. But I want to, I want to say that the only way we can see that we're going to make progress is doing these over time and use the existing resources that we have as effectively as possible. And that's the approach that the finance team is trying to to look at. How can we get as much of this done with the resources that we have, not having to go out to look for um, you know, new tax money? So that's, that's our approach. Thanks.
Wonderful.
Madam Chair, just a comment, if I may?
Yes, Councilor Rylander.
I I think that that having a capital budget put together has other value in that we can turn to the public and be very transparent on what needs to be done, it's all spelled out. They can see if there's some sort of an ask, at least they can evaluate what it's being used for with detail, and I think that's critical.
Yeah, and like I said, uh, this is going to be the first year that we actually have a capital budget. And our budget process is very transparent, we're, you know, we have work sessions. And there's many opportunities for the community to see the details on what's being asked to be put in there. So I agree, it's, it's not going to be hidden in the the grand budget, it'll be pulled aside, which is best practice in business, so. And that's going along very well, that implementation. Um, Emily and her team and the IT folks have done a great job and about ready to move forward with all of it.
Okay, thank you so much. And we'll move on to new business at this point. Four point one, veterans parking at the parks. I don't know, Lindsay, are you taking the lead on this one?
I can certainly start and then I'll uh pass it over to Councilor Medviji to talk about um kind of the background on this a little bit further. So um he was approached by a constituent that um is a disabled veteran and has a um pass through the state of Washington. So as you know, um, the state parks require a fee to go into the state parks, it's the discover pass. Um, and the state has a number of um passes available that either waive or discount that state parks fee for different groups of people. And one of those um is that if you meet certain criteria to be considered a disabled veteran. You can have a lifetime disabled veteran pass that allows that fee to be waived. And so the constituent reached out um and wondered if we could recognize that pass to similarly waive the parking fees that we charge at some of the county parks. Um, and so we drafted an ordinance. And that's what I sent out to each of you uh on Monday um to take a look at. Staff and the PA's office have reviewed that, um, that essentially if somebody is a disabled veteran who possesses that pass. Um, and they show that to county park staff and they also display that in their vehicle when they're using the park. That they would be exempt from the requirement to pay the um pass or the pay the parking fee. So um there wouldn't be an independent determination by county staff of whether somebody is a disabled veteran. That we're not looking at anybody's medical records, we're merely utilizing the state pass. So if the state has determined that they meet the qualification for the state uh lifetime disabled veteran pass. We would recognize that pass for a parking fee exemption. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
And Councilor Medviji, would you, would you like to add anything?
Well, uh, yeah, I had, I don't have much to add other than um, you know, the forever pass, the national park pass. You know, I would, I didn't pay attention to that issue in our proposed ordinance, whether not only the state pass would be recognized, but also uh, the forever pass would be recognized. So that's the only question I had. I, I didn't have much to add other than uh when Lindsay and I first talked about this, you know, I kept asking the question, well, is there any way to forecast what the revenue loss could potentially be? Um, and the answer is, we really don't know. It, I think we have about thirty thousand um veterans roughly in Clark County. Uh, how many of those would qualify under the state pass uh program or federal program? It's, it it would be certainly a de minimis number. So I don't think we're going to lose a lot of revenue uh on this. And I, I think it's just a, an easy way to recognize our disabled veterans uh without creating a new pass, without creating a cumbersome bureaucracy. Basically, just instructions to the gate uh to recognize these other passes.
And today, are you just looking for a thumbs up to moving this forward?
Correct, yeah, an opportunity to ask any questions, provide any feedback if you want changes before it goes to hearing. Um, and then if the council would like to, then we can move it forward to that public hearing.
So Lindsay, does it recognize the federal pass or only the state pass?
It does not recognize the federal pass as drafted, we certainly can change that. Um, I think that the only concern from park staff would be that if we have, you know, ten or eleven different kinds of passes, that that could get confusing for our temporary staff that's out there manning the gates. Um, because then they're looking at different passes and what if the colors and pictures change? So the more simple we can make it, the easier on administration that it is. But of course, the council can do whatever you want.
Gary, if a person has the uh federal pass, would they be likely to have the state one as well? Not necessarily.
Well, I can tell you, I I have the federal pass, I don't have the state pass, I do have a disabled veteran's uh VA card. I I want to keep it as simple as possible. Uh, and I can tell you, one of the biggest challenges for me when I first retired up here was trying to figure out what pass I needed. You know, from Snow Park passes to discovered passes, that, you know, you name it. It was really hard to discover exactly all the passes you needed in any particular uh state, county, or federal park. So I, I mean, I want to simplify this as much as I can, but so I give you a thumbs up on moving forward.
Yes, do I, but I'm a little bit uh confused still by which um method would be the simplest? Would it be the? Would it be the, the VA card that indicates the status? No. What would be the, the simplest for people?
Madam Chair, have a suggestion?
Yes, Counselor Rylander?
Could the wording, could the wording be federal and/or state pass?
We can certainly add a recognition of the federal pass as well. And so it's, we can add as many, I think, like I said, the only question would be if we expand it to, you know, eight or ten of them, that that could get cumbersome and confusing. But I think adding recognition of one federal pass is not a big deal.
Overall, I support the effort and rolling this out to the veterans.
So it sounds like the federal and/or state would be helpful to the veterans in their qualifying, true?
Yeah, I would go for the or, and even though it becomes slightly more cumbersome for the gate.
Okay, well, you've got three thumbs up already and maybe more, I don't know.
Great, we'll go ahead and get this scheduled. Thank you.
Okay, we turn now to counselor reports. Does any counselor wish to give a report today?
I'm not sure if this is a report. I, I did want to mention some, I had some conversations at least with the manager. Kind of cuts across a number of things, including the hearing we just had last night. You know, I would really like to keep on top of any amendments or whether we have to reconsider or not any portion of the plan we just approved for housing options. Camp Bonneville, you know, we had so much extensive work done because of neighborhood questions about Camp Bonneville and their allowed uses. And, and I had asked the question, well, what about a, a veterans home? Because C Mac, other veterans group, our own Veteran Board was proposing that we have a veterans home there and, and the state is very interested to provide a veterans home there. And it, it gets to the issue of, well, okay, do we need three votes to ask the lawyer once again, is this an allowed use? You know, I saw the reuse plan and in it, it didn't list specifically a veterans home, but it lists a law enforcement training center, lists ranges. And so that speaks of the question, can we ask the Army to amend the plan to allow a veterans home? You know, all these issues are ongoing and so one of the pending related things is we had a, a request to reconsider a surface mining vote where we only had three people there. And then it got turned, delved into, well, what does Robert's rules allow? And we still haven't really gotten the answer on that. And then I'm, I'm wondering, well, why don't we just create a procedure where we can reconsider anything? It just takes any person to say, I want to reconsider this. And then it gets a second if it does, and then it gets a vote. And if you have three votes, then you can reconsider it. So all of these are related, ongoing issues. Do we, do we need three votes to have the lawyer delve into whether or not we can consider a veterans home or amend the reuse plan to allow it? You know, all this stuff takes years of planning. So, anyway, I'm looking for a more flexible approach on our procedures, on voting for reconsideration and keep staying on top of county business that may lift and shift over time.
Well, focusing on Camp Bonneville for just a moment, if we may. I emailed you back, Counselor Medviji, and said that, as I read the information, it, it certainly did not list a veterans home. But if our question is, how can we approach the Army for a question on, would you find this acceptable? I would certainly support that if we don't know how to go about that. And I see Bill Richardson is here. Do we know how to ask the Army, Bill, if they would make an exception to the list of user agreements that are there and consider a VA home?
We know how to contact the Army to ask questions about the, well, I don't say that tongue in cheek either. I mean, there's specific people we have to contact regarding how that, that conservation covenant works. And we've done that before, actually, with the Hill Attack Group that, that stationed out there to prevent forest fire spread and stuff like that. We reach out to them and we ask them, does this appear to be a violation of the covenant that's been filed with the deed? And the reason we do that is because the, the covenant is more of a, a reversion interest in the, the property such that if the Army believes that we violate it, property reverts back to the Army. I don't have a gut level of feeling the Army would want to trigger that reversion. I don't think they want the Camp Bonneville back. But that being what it is, I don't think that they would ever grant an exception to the covenant. I, I think they would consider that to be a little bit dirty. And Counselor Medviji could probably weigh on, weigh in on this with his, his experience in the military. I think if they did anything, they would want to rewrite that covenant to allow a use like this as versus granting an exception to it. But we know who to reach out to, to talk to about that. I don't know if it will solely involve the Army. It may also involve components of DNR and DOE because they were interested parties in the approval of the early transfer of the camp over to the county for the cleanup. And so they may have some interest in uses that are allowed on the site or modification of those uses. So if the council wanted to, we could take a look into who, who constitutes the list of parties that we need to contact about that. And then Public Works would reach out to those parties and get a conversation moving forward. Does that answer your question?
Does that, yes, that's good. Counselor Medviji, does that sound like it gets in the right direction?
Yeah, I, I think that sounds really overly complicated. I think just simply asking, is there an amendment process of the Army to add in a veterans home? Otherwise, and they say, no, there's no way forward, let's just drop it. And then we can let the mayor know, who's been very interested in this, let C Mac know, let our, you know, let the veterans community know, they need to look elsewhere. That Camp Bonneville is, is just too hard to do, that it's not an allowed use. It just seems to me, you know, the, the thrust of the original document is it's conservation and one-third active use for recreation. But of course, a law enforcement center and a range are, well, a range could be considered recreational use, but a law enforcement center is not recreational use. So, I mean, it seems like an odd duck within that original agreement. So that to me means, hey, that, that one-third of activity there can be pretty far ranging as long as the original grantor agrees with it. So I would just ask the question of the Army lawyers, your counterpart, on those agreements, whether or not this is something that's easy to do or hard to do or just dead on arrival and we shouldn't consider it further. I wouldn't get D E ecology involved or DNR or any other party involved at this point.
We can definitely do that as a first step if that's what the council's looking for.
I think that sounds fine. I don't see any need to designate it quite yet as a dirty process. I'm not sure why you kind of felt that way. Because asking for an amendment seems like, you know, if it's possible, that would be something we'd want to know how to go about. But we've got a couple of thumbs up here and is that adequate, Kathleen?
Yes, you have three.
Great, so please go ahead, Bill.
Will do.
Thank you. And is there any other counselor report? How about work session requests? I think there are none. Is that, is that right?
Yes, that's correct. There's no work session.
And Lindsay, anything else on policy today?
The only thing I wanted to mention that Josh and Annika did not mention, they will both be here in June. There's the AWC, Association of Washington Cities Conference that's happening in Vancouver. So they will be here physically in June. They are planning on meeting with each of the counselors, either virtually or in person. So continue thinking about those kind of priorities, but wanted to just flag that for you, that that would be the next step with them. That's it for today.
Very good. Well, next then we go to two executive sessions. One of ten minutes, one of twenty minutes authorized through RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one-ten, section one I. And there will be council present and I believe there is no after action, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, no after action. However, let's see, it's eleven forty-seven. Let's come back at twelve twenty for adjournment then of council time. See you at the executive session.
Hello, council, the, or the council is extending executive session for ten more minutes and they will be returning at twelve thirty. Thank you.
Hello, the council is extending their executive session for ten more minutes and will be returning at twelve forty. Thank you.
We are back in council time on Wednesday, May eighteen, twenty twenty-two. We have been in the two executive sessions that were mentioned before we left for them. And we are now back in council time for the singular purpose of adjournment. So this meeting is adjourned.